Hello and welcome to the Tower Coffee Hour. I'm Ty Tyree and we are going to be looking at the city council race for District Nine. But before we introduce our guest, I want to welcome Ani Colt. My co-host on the Tower Coffee Hour. Honey, have you got any thoughts about the race at this point, just 99 days before the election?
You know, I'm getting into it and I think that's one of the things we need with people in Austin is to be into this race and really pay attention to who the candidates are and the issues are.
All right, great. We are going to. There are eight candidates that have filed. Only six have raised any money as of July 15th and only five seem to be actively campaigning. We've talked to three of them and today we have the great opportunity to talk with Joa Spearman and Joa's website is interestingly enough joaforAustin.com. So let's bring Joa on camera and see where we can go. All right, so there's Joa. On camera, there you go.
How you doing?
We're doing great.
Thanks for having me on.
Yeah, well, it's. Just move back where you were. So we're trying to get all my heads right. So we've run into each other a number of times, Joa, you came to Locodoro. Who, why, how do you know Locodoro? How do you know the people there?
Yeah, I have for many years been a big proponent of locally owned businesses, especially restaurants, both personally and professionally through my company, Localer. And over the years, I've, you know, tried to play a role in supporting local restaurants and especially the ones that are doing business the right way. And during the winter storm, especially the work that Good Work Austin was doing to, you know, help people be fed during that storm to also the work they've been doing for years about making sure people are being treated fairly, that work for restaurants and fair wage and things like that. So I've gotten familiar with Adam and Fiore through their work with Good Work Austin. And, you know, I'm very proud to say that, you know, many restaurant owners in this city, especially in District Nine, are supporters of my campaign because they know how much of a proponent of locally owned businesses and restaurant industry I am. And so it was a natural kind of partnership to have those guys open up their restaurant and let me share a little bit about my campaign that night.
Tell me a couple of the restaurants because maybe it's someone's favorite.
Yeah, well, I Commodore is downtown and they have a run club called Commodore Run Club. Philip Spear has been a big kind of contributor to the culinary scene here in Austin for years. And so if you've been to Commodore, you know, I think a couple of years ago, I think 2019, it was named one of the best new restaurants in America. So I'm always there. Olamay is a restaurant that's around 16th and San Antonio, just south of campus. And it's a restaurant that that I love as well. Michael Fotage is the chef owner there and a friend. I'm just trying to, there's so many, you know, it's. To me, when I think of, you know, most people think of Austin as a live music capital of the world and that's true. But when you actually come to Austin for the first time, I think one of the big takeaways you have, you get is that this is such a great food city. So I think, I think in a lot, a lot of ways, the food scene in this city represents a success of the cities in both from a cultural standpoint and in creating the kind of ecosystem that fosters chefs and people in that industry wanting to live here. But then also commercially, if you think about, and even in the late 90s, a lot of the people who were successful with Dell in the 90s, a lot of those people, they invested their money in creating a restaurant scene, you know, and supporting restaurants like Uchi and Uchiko and restaurants that weren't really in this city at that point. And so now you see now restaurants from Austin tend to have success, even more success when they go on to Dallas and Houston. So I once had someone say, Austin is where you create it. Houston is where you monetize it and Dallas is where you franchise it. And, and I think we've seen that time after time and even right now, we're seeing that with Loro. Loro started by Tyson Cole, who started Uchi and Uchiko and and Aaron Franklin from Franklin Barbecue, those two got together and started Loro here in Austin. And now Loro's now, I think they're expanding in Dallas. I think they have plans to expand to some other cities. So I think that that's very, that's a testament to our business scene and our cultural scene. And, you know, I think a lot of people think of Austin just around live music or even around tech. But the food scene, I think, is a very important pillar of our, of our city.
And Halcyon got started here as well, I think, didn't it?
Yes, yes, I, I actually, what my, my favorite story of Halcyon is, yes, it's a coffee shop and a lounge kind of atmosphere. I've had some of my favorite South by Southwest moments at Halcyon downtown. I mean, I know they're, they're Mueller, but the, the original one that was on Fourth Street. I remember just discovering, you know, musicians there because they would play inside, you know, Halcyon. So I know a lot of people, when they think of the music scene in Austin, they're thinking of bigger venues like now A C Live, maybe Stubbs. But for me, I'm still, when I think about South by, I'm thinking about these small coffee shops and lobbies where you just have a singer songwriter and then all of a sudden they end up, you know, becoming Saint Vincent or something like that.
Yeah, this is an amazing town. How long have you been here, Joa?
I am from Colleen originally, so just up the road. Well, I was born in Temple, lived in Colleen, graduated from Colleen High School in 2001. And then I had the, the privilege of being the first person in my family to graduate from college. So I attended University of Texas here in Austin. So I moved here in 2001 and graduated in 2005. I, then I went to Washington DC for three years and, and worked there for an Austin based company called Public Strategies. And then I moved back to Austin. Actually, I moved back to Austin one week after Barack Obama was inaugurated. So I've been back here since and almost my entire time in Austin, going back to 2001, has been in District Nine.
Okay, and, you know, we, we look at your website and there's just all these things on there. People need to go look at your website. We can't do it justice in the time we've got, but they need to go look at your website, look at your history and look at your background in the city. And besides that, look at this lovely woman you're married to who's a great musician.
Oh, hold on, let me do something real quick to just show. My, my wife is a musician and artist and this is her, her debut album. So her name is Angelica Ray. She, she just played Blues on the Green, actually, a couple of weeks ago. And she just put out her second album called Autoro Trato, which means self portrait. She's from Spain, so her music's largely in Spanish. But if you see her live, you'll see her also do covers in English. She plays with a band, usually two or three musicians. She writes and produces all her own music. And, you know, it's, it's, I think it's, again, it's a testament to Austin that, you know, she was living in LA and touring with some substantial artists and has been able to succeed here in Austin and put out two albums and just has an amazing review in the Austin Chronicle of her new album. So just super proud of her.
Great.
What brought you two together?
Actually, yeah, actually, the thing that brought us together actually was my company, Localer. So about 10 years ago, I, I was helping, I was working at a big tech company here in Austin called Bizarre Voice. That was one of the prominent tech companies born here in Austin. And I helped the company go public in 2012 and I was kind of leading their travel strategy in part. And after the IPO, I decided to leave and start my own business and I started Localer. And the whole premise of Localer was to help local, help travelers experience local. Instead of having travelers go where tourists go, the idea was, why not have those travelers support locally owned restaurants and bars and shops? And so we started here in Austin and then now we are in 204 cities around the world. And so five years ago, around, actually, five years ago, this, in July, we were expanding to Spain, to Barcelona and Madrid. And I needed a translator, someone who spoke Spain Spanish. And one of my former investors introduced us and we ended up meeting for 10 minutes. And she started doing some translations for Localer and it wasn't until seven or eight months later that she was touring through Austin with her music. And we, we met then and hit it off and yeah, rest is history.
There we are, yeah, that's a great story, Joa.
I feel very, 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 very lucky and fortunate.
So of all the issues that we face in Austin, I'm pretty sure I know which is number one for you. Give us your top three issues that is a District Nine candidate and councilperson that you would address first day.
Yeah, so everyone, hopefully, hopefully every candidate in this rate, both in District Nine race and every race, honestly, I, I think we're at a point in this city where the consensus should be that the number one issue in our city is affordability. And people have different, different ways of approaching that. I think lately we've been hearing the words affordable housing more often and I support those types of projects. I actually, I support the coming bond, actually. But I actually care more about housing affordability. To me, affordable housing is a type of housing that can be built. Whereas housing affordability is more of a value. And I make that distinction because you can, you may be able to afford a, a single family home for $800,000 and housing affordability for you could be more around, around the lines of can you pay your property taxes? Can you age in place if you retire? Whereas a renter, you know, maybe a fresh out of college renter is housing affordability for them is how much the rent increases are year over year. So I say housing affordability because not everyone's going to be, maybe, maybe some people are going to be priced out of affordable housing in the traditional sense, but they still want housing affordability. So I think that's issue number one. And the thing that I, I really think we need to do there is, it's, it's, I think that we very much need to really make housing affordability a value set for this next city council. We have, we're going to have three new council members and plus we're going to, you know, a couple of them are up for reelection. And I think we have an opportunity here to really step into the, the positives that 10-1 was, was promised with. I think I would, being very realistic, I would say that so far 10-1 has not produced the outcomes that we, we saw it when we, when we switched over to 10-1 in 2014. And I think in part that's because it's, it's been a new system. I think there's been a lot of growing pains, both in how we've approached land development code talks, how we've approached issues around homelessness and police accountability, all these different issues. So I'm really hopeful that the council that I hope to be a, a member of, starting in 2023, is one where you see us fully stepping into the positives that we were promised with 10-1. And so I think housing affordability is a big issue that is spans all the districts. But I think each district has its own understanding of what that means. And District Nine, being the urban core of the city, we are the place where, you know, my belief is that District Nine really represents the, the heart and soul of Austin because you have people coming here for all kinds of reasons. You have students coming here at 18 years old to go to UT. You have people decide, you have people, empty nesters who maybe they live in West Austin or North Austin and they decide, once they don't have kids, maybe they're going to move into District Nine to downtown to a more urban dense environment. Where there's more walkability. You have people who are young professionals or entrepreneurs who want to start their businesses here, their careers here. So I think this is a district where if you really nail housing affordability in District Nine, then I think it really speaks to the types of people that live in other parts of the city as well. I think that's issue number one. I think issue number two is creativity. And what I mean by that is we have a, a city that its identity to the world is that's the live music capital of the world. And we have, you know, I, I, I talk to musicians every day. If you were to ask 10 musicians in this city, is Austin the live music capital of the world? I sadly, I think the majority would say it's not. And it's not because there's a lack of shows or venues. I think it's, it's because there's a lack of focus around supporting musicians, around wages, around their ability to live in Austin. We're seeing more and more of our artists and musicians and not even just musicians, actually. I would, I would span creatives to people in the restaurant industry, people in tech who are, who are on the entrepreneurial builder side, maybe more so than like the, the side of working for a big tech company. But all these people are creatives who more and more they're have, they're being priced out of Austin. They're having to live in Lockhart or Bash Drop or San Marcos. And there's nothing wrong with living in those places, but there is something wrong with forcing people to live further and further away from their work as we have obviously climate change and not making people get in their cars and drive eight, 10 more miles than they were before is not something that the city should be optimizing for. And so I really think that decreasing the, the chasm between the creative industries and professionals in Austin and the people who are in, you know, industries like real estate or finance and, and big tech would be helpful. I think that there, there are creative ways to do that. For example, we have big companies coming to Austin like Google, Facebook, now Meta, Tesla. I think that these companies are coming here in part because of the culture and the creative ecosystem here. And I think that there are ways where we can structure partnerships with those companies around housing, around investing in our creative communities, things like music venues, things like incubators to support our musicians. So and I'm on the board of Zach Theater and I, and I, and I was on the board of Austin PBS. I was formerly the vice chair of the Austin Music Commission. So I, these issues that face the nonprofit sector, the creative industries are really near and dear to my heart. And I think they are near and dear to Austin's heart as well. And so I think it's really important that city council really puts those front and center. And then lastly, I would say the third issue is inclusivity. And many people who live in Austin for years are very familiar with the 1928 city plan that, that codified a lot of the segregationist policies of Austin. You know, if I'm elected to council here, there's a chance that I would potentially be on council for, for, for 2028, which could potentially be the, it would be the centennial of that 2019, 28 plan. A lot of times when you hit something like a centennial, you're celebrating something. Whereas in the case of the 1928 city plan, I think it's something that we, we need to be moving away from. And I, I really think, feel very strongly about having our city council continue to take steps to eradicate a lot of the, the racism and segregationist policies that were wired into that, that, that city plan. And so I really want to focus on those areas as well. And I, and honestly, I think that making the city more inclusive, it's not just along racial lines. It's also around, just earlier today, I was talking to someone who, she, she's a creative, she's a writer and she, she's disabled. And she was sharing with, with me issues around being a disabled person in Austin, whether that's using metro access or that's finding housing and certain issues and things like that. So I think inclusion is really about making this sure that the city is really welcoming and inviting and inclusive of all the types of people who live here. And so that's another area that I think it's important that we focus on with this next council.
I would be remiss if I did not bring up Austin's older people, you know, elders, Austin's elders. I mean, so many elders have moved here and, and it's a, the housing costs and all the costs are a real issue for them. Transportation, just as you brought up, is an issue to them. And we're a big voter block.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's why when I was talking about housing affordability, I, I mentioned seniors who are moving, you know, maybe the empty nesters in some cases who have moved into District Nine. And our seniors are, are, are not only just politically important in Austin, but I would just say socially important. I mean, there's so many studies and so much data showing that multi-generational communities are the most thriving and, and best. So having seniors in a community, it's good for people too. It's good for kids, it's good for teenagers, it's good for college age students. So I really think that, again, District Nine is the place in Austin where you really can create a, a real sense of belonging for everyone, whether there's someone going to Austin High or someone with kids going to Matthews Elementary, or there are seniors who maybe they were living somewhere in the, else in the country or the state and they've decided to move into downtown Austin or into Mueller. And so I, the, the kinds of things that I'm excited to do are get really creative about figuring out what are ways that we can allow people to age in place? And what are ways that we can optimize so that people have more walkable, ideally, you know, shaded areas? You know, we're in a hot summer, hot, dry summer. We need more shaded tree, we need more, you know, sidewalk cover, we need better sidewalks. All this stuff ties into affordability and livability and mobility. And just on the housing front, I was talking to a woman who, she lives in the Hyde Park area and she was saying, talking about her, even with, even with the benefit of the maxed out homestead exemption at 20%, she's still feeling like in a couple of years, she's not going to be able to afford to, to stay where she is. And she's been there for 30 years. And to me, it's, it's, it's behoven on the city and city council especially to put policies in place that allow people like that who, who give so much to their communities, who, who have, you know, they worked, maybe they worked for the city or they worked for AISD for years and they retire and they still want to live in their neighborhoods and their communities. And to me, I think the city should be enacting policies that allow people to do that. And one of the policies that I'm really excited about trying to champion is around ADU development. And ADUs, it's, it's, it's not going to solve all of our affordability issues, but one of the creative things that I would like to see the city do is partner, create a public private partnership fund. And what I, what I mean is a fund in which the city has some money that's in it, but also we're asking our partners like big companies, Google, Tesla, et cetera, to contribute as well. And I'm imagining we could potentially access those funds to do things like providing zero or very low interest loans to seniors to have ADUs built, maybe behind their houses or maybe even if they live in a house that has higher height restrictions, but they can't afford to build, use, use the height allowance. And maybe they're building a ground floor, a second floor apartment that they can then rent out and use that generated income to, to pay those property taxes. So I think the city can both address some of its affordability and housing issues while also helping seniors generate income, passive income. You know, maybe there, maybe it's housing for teachers at nearby schools. Maybe it's housing for nurses at nearby hospitals. I live really close to Matthews Elementary School in the Clarksville neighborhood. And I, I, I can't imagine if you're a teacher who teaches at this school, having to live in Maynor and driving all the way from Maynor, for example, to teach at this school. And I think it would be amazing if we could have, you know, an ADU built or a duplex built in the neighborhood where on one end, maybe it's a senior who's been living in the neighborhood for 30 years. And the other end, it's a teacher who just got hired in this school and wants to live in the neighborhood and walk to work.
There are going to be a lot of creative solutions that are needed, particularly with the big bubble of baby boomers going through aging. I heard some of those people just today, we do a tight outdoor Tai Chi thing. And some of my neighbors who are considerably younger than I am, thinking of going to Westminster. You know, there aren't many places like that either for those who take that choice in Austin. However, there are a lot of other issues, so we'll move on.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think I, what I would just say, just to kind of wrap up on this piece is Austin is a city of abundance. And there, the reason why the city is growing so much and, and it's, yes, we've had a lot of growth during, during the pandemic, but Austin's growth has been happening for decades. I mean, if you were to talk to our current demographer or our last one, Ryan Robinson, going back to 1880, you can, 1880, not 1980, 1880, you can draw a chart, a straight line of the almost predictable growth of Austin, decade over decade. It's, it's been, it's very predictable. And that's because Austin has always been a place where people feel a sense of belonging. They feel like they can come and become the, be themselves here, either as creatives, as artists or as young families, as seniors, retirees. This is a place where people feel attracted, all types of people. And, and I think we're at a crossroads as a, as a city where the affordability issues are preventing people from feeling that sense of belonging. Because if you can't afford to stay here or live here, then you don't feel like you belong here. And so I think this, the, the task at hand for District Nine representative that's elected in November or the, and the next council in general is really to make sure that we can continue to protect that sense of belonging that so many people have had here for decades.
One of the things I was impressed with, Joa, we, I saw you talking in a forum with your other candidates about housing and transportation that was put on by Aura. And you kept coming back to the point where we can talk about property, we can talk about buildings, we can talk all of that, but I want to talk about people. And you kept saying that, you kept coming back to the people, you kept coming back to the people. And that's, I guess, you know, that's what really stood out to me in that conversation. By the way, we recorded that conversation, it's up on our, our YouTube channel. So if anybody wants to see you making those statements, we've got them. But it, that's one of the things that I said, you know, we need to follow this guy, we need to pay attention to what he's talking about.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's, I'm glad that you point that out. And what I would say is, I, so I, I moved to Austin, like I said, I'm the first person in my family to graduate from college. And I, my first 18 years of life were living in scarcity. I mean, I'm the youngest of three boys, a single mother household, we grew, I grew up on food stamps and living, my mom, I watched my mom, you know, going check to check, week to week, working two, three jobs my whole life. I lived, I shared a bedroom with my older brothers my whole childhood. And it, I didn't have my first, my own bedroom, my own bathroom until I went to college. So Austin for me has always represented abundance. And, and, and most, most, for most people, when you're in college, that's when you're poor and you're like a poor college kid. For me, it was like, wow, like I have so much abundance, I can eat wherever I want. I have my own room, I have a bathroom and all these things. And, and, and I, I share that because when I, I think because of my experience growing up in scarcity, growing up the way that I did, seeing my mom struggle the way that she did. And, and I should point out, my mom, last year, she graduated from college at 60 years old. So really impressive woman. And, and then now in my time in Austin for the last, better part of last two decades has been very much in abundance. I'm an entrepreneur, I've, I've done pretty well for myself. I've been able to travel and, you know, be a person of means and whatnot. And so in a lot of ways, I feel like I bring a pretty unique set of personal and professional experiences to the table to relate to a lot of different people in District Nine in particular. And, and I think, so I'm very much focused on people centricity because I think whenever you look at any mistake that local governments or governments of any type make, usually the mistake is made by not being mindful of the people that are impacted by the policies or not being thoughtful enough of the types of people that would benefit from the policy. So we have a lot of history of, of prioritizing structures, buildings, physical things and over people. And I think if you really put people front and center, people of all types, then I think that puts you in the best possible position to actually craft policies that people truly feel like is serving them and they're benefiting from. So I think whether it's affordability or mobility, you know, accountability, police accountability, all these different issues. If you put people at the center, then I think you actually end up with a better, more sustainable result than if you're just optimizing for some, you know, something physical or a structure that exists at a moment in time.
That was sort of a softball question for you, wasn't it?
Oh, thank you.
So what, what's the biggest stumbling block for housing affordability in Austin? And I'm going to throw out just on top of the list is possibly the land use code. What would you do about it?
Yeah, that, the biggest stumbling block has, it, it, it has been the land, land development code, land use code. Thankfully, what I would say is, and I, you, you've both likely have been in Austin longer than I have. So you've seen even more of this, I don't know, you haven't, how long have you been in Austin? 10 years, what about you, Ty?
35.
Okay, so I'm right there in the middle. So, so Austin has been, so we, we, we last did our code in the 1980s. They have been, council in the city has been having conversations about updating the code going back to the late 90s. When Toby Fortrell was the city manager in the early 2000s, they were having conversations about updating the land use code. So the, what, the point that that makes is that this isn't a new issue. We've, we've know that we've needed to address this and update the code for years. And thankfully, Austin has a track record of being very latent on addressing these issues, but eventually coming to the right conclusion. I think Project Connect actually is a good example. In 2000, there was a transit bond that failed by 2,000 votes. And that 2,000 vote loss cost 20 years in development in our transit infrastructure. But now with Project Connect passed in 2020, hopefully, we're on the right track now. And so I think we're in the same place with land development code. I think the issues around housing affordability are so severe that everyone knows that we need some action. The recent vote, the recent 10, 10-0 vote on VMU2, for example, I think is a testament to that. I think council realizes that we need some, some forward movement here on, on land use. And so what I would really focus on, again, going back to the people centricity, is it's not enough to talk about what we need to do. There's so much conversation, the, the whole conversation around Code Next, for example, in 2017 and 2018, that entire conversation was around structures and building types. And that was a failure of the conversation, that was a failure of council to really shape the narrative. And that was a failure of the conversation, that was a failure of council to really shape the narrative around why they were doing that, even though it ended up getting seven votes. The conversation around land use needs to be a conversation around people. And the particular people that I think the conversation should be centered around in the city of Austin, in District Nine in particular, I think there are three groups of people. I think one, it's our essential workers. We have, we're grossly understaffed with our police department, our fire department, our EMS department, our water department, all of our real core infrastructure and first responders. And part of that is because of the housing affordability issues. So number one, we need to update the land use code so that we can create the kind of housing that these people need. They can't necessarily afford with their wages to, to buy million dollar, single family homes, nor can they afford $3,000 one bedrooms in luxury apartment buildings downtown. So we need to build the kind of duplexes and fourplexes that can house these people. Two, we need to be able to afford our creative professionals and our service industry professionals. Because guess what? People aren't going to be able to work in restaurants in District Nine in Mueller or Hyde Park or downtown if they're living in Bastrop or Buta or San Marcos. And nor are musicians and artists. And so we need to be optimizing our land use code to make sure that we can, we have multi-income levels that can be, be able to house in District Nine. And then lastly, again, to the point earlier, our seniors. It's really, I think it's paramount that District Nine is a district that really makes it possible for people to age in place here. I, I can't, I, it, it really pains me, the idea that if you're an 18-year-old or a 19-year-old and you go to UT, you're a freshman or sophomore in college, living on campus, that that may be the closest you ever lived to downtown Austin. Because when you graduate, unless you're working for a big tech company, making a lot of money, you're, you're probably not going to be able to afford to rent downtown. And then after that, let's say you get, let's say you get married and you want to buy a house. You're probably not going to be able to afford to buy in District Nine. And let's say you, you retire and you're, you're a senior, you're trying to age and, and stay in Austin. You're not going to be able to afford to stay in with the property tax increases the way they are. So I think that if we can figure out aging in place and multi-generational living in District Nine, especially for seniors who have fixed incomes, then I think we can really solve a lot of these issues around housing affordability.
Yeah, we are, we are on fixed incomes, we are, our average age is 80. And we are, you know, looking at another 10 years and what do we do? Because property taxes are going to keep going up. And, you know, the whole discussion about why do we fund everything with property taxes and then give half of it away?
Yeah.
You know, what?
I know, I know, our school, school funding is sadly, that's a key issue, but we need to tackle that eventually as well.
Yeah, so anyway, it's, all of us. Let's, transportation, we are, Miller is a neighborhood that's 711 acres, the old airport, it's close to downtown. But to get downtown, I almost have to get in an automobile and drive downtown. Project Connect will help a lot on that. We will have two rapid transit systems coming right through Miller, one which will eventually get to the airport and one which gets us downtown. But there's something wrong in a city like this where at my age of 78, I have to go out and get in a car to go downtown.
Agreed.
How long can I keep doing that?
I, I fully agree. And as someone who, I, I am very privileged, I haven't, I haven't owned a car in Austin. September will be five years. So I'm very fortunate and a part of that, obviously, I don't have kids and I, I, I work remotely, so that helps. But it's really, I mean, everyone's, climate change is a big reason why we should be figuring out ways to get people out of their cars. But it also makes sense from, from a fiscal standpoint for the city to invest in transit infrastructure. Because what it does is it, it positions our city better long-term, both as a economic hub, because we can attract employers that realize that we have the kind of infrastructure that, that they're going to need for their workforce. It's going to help us with things like, right now, we're, we're negotiating with all of our public safety unions, with EMS, with fire, with police. And if we have better public transit infrastructure, then we're also able to attract those people who can live, they can live, afford to live further away and have a good, reliable, you know, always on public transit network to tie in and come into downtown or come into District Nine. And so it makes sense from a fiscal standpoint for the city to invest in transit infrastructure as well. So I'm really focused on supporting Project Connect, making sure that it's delivered on time, that it's delivered on budget. But then also in crafting a narrative to the city at large that says Project Connect is only the beginning. You know, that's, that's, Project Connect is a great investment, it's a, we've taken a big step, that's great. But that doesn't mean that we don't need to still thinking about things like having sidewalks, having safe bike lanes, having shaded areas for the summer. You know, all these things are connected to being able to create an ecosystem where, I mean, people can live longer. People can, you know, be less tethered to having to drive in and commute into work or wherever they go every day. All these things are related to the climate change, of course, but like I said, they're also related to fiscal responsibility. I mean, already we're seeing, the city is predicting right now that we're going to start having a little bit of a fiscal cliff, where we're going to be spending a little bit, a few million dollars more than we generate as a city, starting, I think they're saying in 2026, 27, which, you know, that's four or five years away, but that'll be here before you know it. And tho, those problems are only going to exacerbate if we're a city where we're having to have these contentious discussions with our public safety unions that are, you know, demanding higher and higher wages and benefits because they're grossly understaffed, thus the people that are staffed there are overworked and they're living further and further away from their jobs and things like that. So all these things are very intersectional, they're all connected. And again, I think District Nine is, is the district in Austin where if you really prove the case, it's, it's no surprise to me that Mueller is in District Nine. Because the, the very thought, I mean, this is, Mueller is a really, is a testament. So what happens when there's proactive, collaborative and comprehensive thinking about creating a real sense of community and belonging where it works for kids, you have things like thinkery there. It works for seniors, it, you know, it has proximity to shops and things, and restaurants. And so we need to be thinking about doing things like that at scale across the city.
I will give you a little background, when I first moved here, it was when they were determining that the districts and we didn't want to be part of District Nine, we wanted to be with the east side. And your friend and mine, James Nortay and, and several others went and talked when they were deciding that, promoting why we wanted to be over with the east side. In retrospect, I, I get it now, particularly as Austin, as Miller is filling out. It's hopefully what we call a promise. I have a question. And let me stumble through it, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
There, there, we're talking to some candidates, there are a lot of good candidates. We're really fortunate and blessed with a lot of good candidates. So it gets to me, and, and the difference in views or perhaps the positioning of how you're looking at the issues in this, in the city may differ. But what it gets down to is being an effective person once you're on council.
Yes.
And I'd like to see if you can address that.
Thank you. I think, I think that's the best question so far. And the reason why, the reason why I say that is because that's the, it's, it truly is the most important one. There are eight candidates running for District Nine. Like you said, there are five of us that are, you know, raising money and things like that. So I think there are two clear things that differentiate me as a candidate and, and make me the person I think should represent District Nine. I think one is, going back to the point earlier that you made, Ty, about me, how much I've been talking about being focused on people first. That's something that all candidates will say, but I'm the candidate that I think really has the track record of doing that. I've started four businesses and, and any past customers, clients, investors will tell you that I am overly community centric and people centric with all that I do. On the nonprofit boards that I have served on and have served Zach Theater, Austin PBS, Aid Services of Austin, which I was the board chair of. On the Austin Music Commission, I was also on the Downtown Commission. All, all the work that I've done for years in Austin has been very people centric. And I think that this is really important because whether, whether you like his policies or not, one of the things that made Greg Cassar effective as a council member was that he had people behind him. He was able to show that his work was for a community, for people. And again, policy aside, whether you think you like that, whether he was for or not, I very much think that I have a track record of bringing that people centricity to my work. And I think where, I think some candidates will say similar things, but I don't think that they have that track record. I think there's a lot of, there's candidates that have a lot of political ambition. I think there are candidates that have maybe political campaign experience. But that's different than the experience of either building a business or learning how to build something with the community, learning how to serve as a, knowing how to serve as a board member, how to get things done with a group of people. And I have a track record of doing that. And so I think that's one. I think second, and I, and I, and I would say, this is a really important piece too. I am very much coming to this job and this work as a problem solver. And again, going back to the, to the struggles of 10-1, 10, part of what has, has been unfortunate with 10-1 thus far is that we've had a lot of people on council optimizing for political situations. And so there's been a lot of politics. And I say, you know, local government is local first and government second. Unfortunately, what we've had with this council is politics first and local government second. There's been a lot of, excuse me, there's been a lot of political triangulation around these issues like land use code, police accountability, there's, there's been a lot of politics happening. And I think that that speaks to a lot of the ambition. I think that there are people who are running for office right now, I think there are people who are in office who, this, it's a stepping stone for them. Where it, whereas, you know, you can ask anyone from me, I've been an entrepreneur. I, up until the last two years, I was honestly planning on starting another business. But I realized that my skillset as an entrepreneur, as a business leader, it would be really well-served, helping the city solve some problems locally around affordability, around inclusivity and others. So I really feel like my experience putting people first in, in areas that aren't related to being a political campaign operative, for example, and then also my experience solving problems. I think that those are going to be really material to being a council member that's effective, that's able to, to get people to understand where I'm coming from, to, to have people feel like they can collaborate with me and work with me. And not just kind of putting me in a bucket of, a, you know, a known vote on all issues because of political reasons.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
I want to track back, you've said 10-1, 10-1, 10-1 a number of times. And for those people who are new in Austin, Miller, that's when we converted our city council from an at-large city council to a district, single district, single-member district, city council.
Yes, yes.
And yeah, there was a lot of, a lot of good reasons to do that. One of the big scares that I had at that time was that we would become parochial, that we would, we would get to where the districts were fighting each other.
And we have.
Instead of getting good representation, and in fact, that's what's happened to some degree.
Yes.
So, you know, it's, it's time for us to say, okay, that was so we get good representation for all the people of Austin. And that's what we really need, is good representation for all the people of Austin. But it's for the people of Austin, it's not for District Nine, not for District Four, not for District One. And I, you know, I, I really, that vision for me of what a city council works like, it's not the old Chicago of the, you know.
Yeah, this is not daily, this is not daily politics like Chicago. And, and honestly, we, again, I, I am running for city council, I'm not running for mayor. This is, we don't need 10 mayor, we don't need 11 mayors, you know, we need one mayor, 10 really effective council members who can collaborate, work together, act like a really effective board in many cases, and point the city in the right direction. I, I, I'm sure you saw the, the reports a few months ago, maybe even weeks, that showed the high percentage of people who think that the city is going in the wrong direction. And, you know, we're used to seeing things like that with the state or maybe even the federal government. But when you see that at the local level, it's just like, it just shows you how far we've gone in, in, in the wrong direction.
We just got an email this morning from Kirk Watson's campaign manager, trying to set a schedule for us to have an interview with him. And so, you know, those are some of the same kind of questions we're going to ask when the, we're talking about mayor and not district.
Yeah.
So we've got that coming up. All right, you got, finish it up.
Okay, now Kirk Watson, if I understand, is talking about this whole zoning issue of maybe doing it district by district instead of by?
Which he's been panned for.
Yeah, he's, he's got a lot of flack off of that.
He's, he's, he's already pulled back on that.
Okay.
Well, he's also tried to explain what he meant instead of what everybody thinks.
He told, he personally, he, months before, so in November, I had breakfast with him and he communicated that was, he communicated that plan to me then, and I told him then that I, I didn't agree with it. Kirk has a phenomenal background. I mean, he was an effective mayor, he's done a lot of great things as a public servant. I think, I think he could be really effective. I, I think Celia also could be really effective. I think that politically, from a policy standpoint, I think Celia is very sharp. I think that her, her housing policy that she's put out has been really, really sharp and forward-thinking. I think both of them would be, would be solid choices for mayor. But on that particular issue on Kirk's housing policy, it, it, it was, it was not the best start. It, it led a lot of us to, to worry that there was going to be a little bit more focus on kind of that war politics mentality of everyone kind of spending for themselves. I'm glad that he's pulled back from that, I'm glad that he clarified it. And, and like I said, I mean, he's, he's, he's a known entity, he's got a lot of name ID, he's raised a million dollars. I'm really hopeful that he's, he gets even more forward-thinking with his policies around housing affordability. And, and, you know, he, he has the political ability to play it less safe, and I would like to see him do that.
So you can work with either one of them, Celia or Kirk?
Oh yeah, I've met with them both, talked to them both multiple times. Like I said, I think the difference that I perceive in both of them is, I think Celia, yes, she has served as a state representative, which is helpful. But I think to local issues, she'll be a little bit less experienced. I think in, in, very similar to Mayor Adler in a lot of ways, where she'll, there'll be some, some, some ramp-up time possibly for her to really understand how the municipal government works differently than state level. Whereas I think Kirk, obviously he'll come in and I think he would come in with a lot of political capital because of his popularity in a lot of ways. That's, that's for better or for worse. It could be, it could be good in that he could, I think rightfully, put more of the balance of power into the hands of the elected officials on the council than city staff and city manager's office, which, which I think it has a lot of issues and that the city manager's office has a lot of power despite that not being in elected office. But on the, for, for worse, I think, you know, he could take some of these ideas like the, having the council districts have their own housing policies, for example. And if he's, if he has a lot of political capital, he could run with those ideas in the wrong direction. So I think it's really important in, in both, for both Celia and Kirk to, to really come in planning to listen. Listen and collaborate, you know, like we, the best leadership in that position, I think, is going to come from having a willingness and a desire to listen and collaborate. And, and then, and then, but, but then still having conviction. You know, I think, I think Mayor Adler, where he's been effective is that he has done a lot of listening and collaborating. I think where maybe he hasn't done as well in certain areas, like the Uber Lyft issue comes to mind, for example, from a few years ago, he hasn't had deep conviction around certain these issues. And so he's been more inclined to kind of build consensus. And I think whereas you see something like South by Southwest, the call to council South by Southwest during the beginning of the pandemic, that took a lot of conviction and leadership, and I would really applaud him for that.
So you've got two minutes, Joe, why, why in the heck should somebody who lives in the Miller community vote for you?
People that live in the Mueller community, more, I would argue than any other community in Austin, represent the type of quality of life and community that this entire city should benefit from. It's the kind of dense, community-centric, multi-generational community that we need all over Austin. Seniors live in Mueller, students live in Mueller, young families live in Mueller. We need that all over Austin, especially District Nine. And I think I'm the candidate that not only acknowledges that, but also has the professional acumen and, and in a lot of ways lacks the political ambition so that I can really focus on being an effective council member and not focus on being a council member that can. Um, so that I can really focus on being an effective council member and not focus on being a council member that can eventually run for senate. Or end up in DC or something. Uh, and so I think with my background as an entrepreneur, my background on nonprofit boards like Zach Theater and Austin PBS. Um, my background as a first generation college student who grew up in scarcity, who's now in a little bit more abundance. I think I can relate to to the people who live in Mueller, I think I can relate to people who live all over District Nine in a lot of ways. Um, and I think that'll make me a really effective council member because I'll be able inclined to listen and collaborate with people because I can, I can relate to them in a lot of ways.
Works for me.
Okay, we're not endorsing anyone till we have a chance to talk to everybody.
I understand, I mean, if there's, like like you said, there are a lot of good candidates in the field. Um, I'm as a voter, I'm really excited that we have such a diversity of candidates. Um, I I think that, you know, District Nine has for the last decade or so, kind of been in the status quo. I think now we have an opportunity to really be a a forward-thinking district in this in this council, and that's what I'm excited to do.
I think on your website, you say something, we are in a crisis situation, and I think you're.
On affordability especially.
Yep, and we are, we need to do something about it, so. Joel, we're gonna say thank you very much for this. And uh, we'll cut away for a little bit and I'll come right back to you.
Alright, thank you so much.
Okay. So, we've just been talking with Joel Spearman, who's running for Austin City Council, District Nine. Uh, you've heard his message, you've heard why we should vote for him. And there's his website, joelforAustin.com, Ani, last words, you get to close it.
I think we Austinites have a lot of opportunity to have a very good candidate in District Nine. And I urge you as an individual to look at Jonah's campaign and all the other ones. That we're working very hard to present to you through our media outlet.
Take care and we'll see you next time when we talk to a candidate.